Welcome, everyone, to the Plastow Planning Board of Wednesday, March 4. Our minute taker is going to use the video recording to take minutes, so I'll do the roll call. James Beck.
Here.
Lori Mallett.
Here.
Francine Hart.
Here.
Jeff Adams.
Here.
And John Cashel is here, Planning Director, and I'm here, Tim Moore. First item on the agenda is a review and approval of the February 19 minutes. Is there a motion on those minutes?
Mr. Chair, do we need to approve Jeff Adams as a voting member? Or not?
Yes, we should do that. So, yeah, I'll move to make Jeff Adams a voting member. Thank you, Francine.
I move to approve the minutes of February 19.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And our public hearing tonight is a review and comment on a municipal site plan for the town of Plastow, Markey Pearson Town Manager. The plan proposes to locate a 400,000 gallon municipal potable water tank and related operations building. Property is located at 41 Sweet Hill Road and towards the rear, text map 62 lot 18 in the MDR District. Town of Plastow is the property owner of record. And so we have Jean Forbes, sorry, Jean from Mondrav Engineering. So Jean, I'll turn the floor over to you for the presentation.
Thank you, and I appreciate taking the time to meet with me today and giving an opportunity to update the planning board on where we're at with the project and also to, basically, we're here to solicit your input from you and from the public. We're at a stage now in our design where we have submitted 90% design complete documents for approval at the state level, and at the same time, we're trying to do this kind of outreach to solicit input and ideas, make sure we didn't forget something and whatnot. This is something that is a very comprehensive project that affects multiple municipalities. It's bringing water down from Manchester Water Works through London Dairy and Dairy, down through Windham, Salem, Atkinson, and ultimately to Plastow. Plastow has an existing fire suppression system, as you are probably aware. This will convert that, this project will convert that fire suppression system to a potable water system. So we're here today to talk about one part of that overall project, and that is a contract that will be focused on building a 400,000 gallon water storage tank at the top of Sweet Hill Road. This plan that is up on the screen now shows the location of that proposed tank. It is on property currently owned by the town of Plastow, and access through a drive there you can see coming off of Sweet Hill Road. So this tank will be one part of the project, as I mentioned. There are also water mains involved that bring water up Sweet Hill Road, water mains that are down on the east road area, bringing water from Plastow. There's a pump station that we're planning to construct in Atkinson, and right now, there's some 76 property owners that have been identified throughout the town that have impacted wells, impacted by MTBE contamination. And so the state of New Hampshire is funding this project, and it really is for the benefit of those impacted property owners and for the long-range use by the town as a potable water system. So with that background, let me, let me turn to the site plan itself.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure, please.
The project is paid by the state. It would, are they paying, they're paying for the tower and the construction of the tower, correct?
Correct.
They're also paying for the, putting the pipes in the ground coming up Elm Street from Main Street up the hill or not?
They're paying for all the piping that we're installing.
They will.
We're actually coming up at, there's an existing line down at the bottom near Hale Spring Road. That connect, we're going to connect there and come up. There is a segment of pipe that runs from an existing water system on Bryant Brook Road in Atkinson.
Yeah.
That will run all the way along, well, through a pump station that'll be located at the town line to ultimately to the existing line near that Dunkin' Donuts at East Road. And then there are some intermediate segments of pipe that are being paid for. One is on Wentworth and the other is on Westville Roads, and those are smaller pipes that are aimed at getting some, at getting at some of these MTV contaminated properties. And so the state is paying for all of this work, and at least we hope they are, we'll be pursuing grant funding as we've been expecting this for some time now with the groundwater drinking water trust fund.
Now, I know we're just looking at the tower, but I just try to gather some information for my own personal benefit.
Sure.
It, when you say Westville and Wentworth, Wentworth Ave, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Now, the state's paying for piping for those two roads?
Yes.
Are they paying, I know we have pipes in the ground on Main Street down by the town hall, probably, I don't know if they go up to the safety complex, is that where they go to?
There is a water main that's there existing now, yes.
Okay, so you just have to extend them up Palmer Ave and then up Sweet Hill to the town?
We don't need, we're not going up Palmer Ave.
Oh, you're not?
Like I said, there's a connection, there's an existing line that runs all the way to the bottom of Hale Street, Hale Road.
Hale Spring?
Hale Spring, right?
Yeah, Hale Spring Road, I'm sorry.
Okay, so from Hale Spring, you have to go up Sweet Hill?
We're going right up to Hill, yeah.
Oh, you're not going to go up Palmer, you're going to up Hale Spring?
Correct.
Existing line in Hale Spring?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the whole configuration.
Sure.
And when you get up the hill, then you obviously have to connect the piping, you're going to show us where the pipes are going to go?
Right, well, we're not going to, I'm not here to talk today about the.
No, I understand, but I just wanted to understand the full project.
Right.
May I interrupt and request that we are having a meeting on March 30th, a water meeting, and you're more than welcome to attend and listen because that's where you're going to get most of your information.
I was just trying to take advantage of his knowledge.
Absolutely, and I welcome questions. Don't feel hesitant about interrupting, I think that, you know, gets quicker to the bottom lines of concern.
I know the focus is on the tower, so go ahead.
Yeah, and that's fine. So let me, let me turn to the, to the site plan itself. Now, I hope you can see this, I'll try to use my cursor to point to the main aspects. Now, the water main is currently shown on this side, but as I was just talking to, to others here, it is being relocated over here on this side. But once we, we get to the top, that's all going to be a different contract, but it will bring a water main here into a new driveway that will be constructed along this parcel of land, and this will be paved, and it will bring us to the larger bulk of the land where there'll be a building here. The function of that building is basically to provide access to valves and instrumentation. We'll have a pressure sensing system there that will be used to control the pumps down on East Road via radio telemetry. The, the tank level will drop a couple feet, and when it drops to a preset point, the pumps will be commanded to turn on and fill up again, and when it reaches, reaches the fill point, it'll shut off. So that, that control system is in this building, as are some control valves to allow flow to be managed as it comes in and out of the tank and to provide a place to sample and whatnot.
So you said that is supply and distribution pumping? Or just supply?
It supplies water into the system, it's the only place water comes from, and once it reaches these elevations, this elevation keeps the whole system pressurized so that you have adequate pressures at the highest points we can reach that we're going to service, and then it's at the right elevation, so it's not too high to create a overpressure at the lower points in town. So, so there was a lot of thought that went into how tall this tank ought to be, and we are basically filling the tank, keeping it at those operating levels, but it, the water really comes from, well, Manchester, but it comes from the East Road pump station. Yes?
So the, the pumps will be in that pump house?
No. The pumps are down on East Road.
Oh.
What's here are the controls for that pump. The controls, the way the pumps know to come on is that the tank level has come down, and the pumps will receive a radio signal from, from this system here, from that building, that will tell it where the, the water level is so that the pumps come on and feed the system.
Is the tank on Sweet Hill, is this the secondary tank because the one in Atkinson is actually the main tank?
The one in Atkinson and this do work collaboratively. That volume that is there, the Atkinson tank is a 1 million gallon tank, this is 400,000 gallons. That 1 million gallon tank sizing was set in a, in a way that essentially reserves some capacity for fire protection, so what you would normally want in, in the town of Plastow would be more than 400,000 gallons, but that volume is there in the Atkinson. So they do work collaboratively, but they are not on the same pressure system. The pressure levels in the, in the Atkinson system are lower in elevation, that's why we're boosting it up, but the volume is there for fire protection.
Okay, thanks.
So this structure here is, is one structure, the other structure, of course, is going to be this tank, and what I'd like to show you is, I can't show you what that tank looks like, we haven't built it yet, but I can show you one very similar to it.
Yep, good.
This is a 300,000 gallon tank. It's actually a little bit higher above grade than, than our tank will be. We're looking at 400,000 gallon tank, it's a little bit wider. We have a total side water depth, if you will, of 20 feet. Most of that is underground, not most of it, actually, about half of it. So we will, and it depends which angle you look at it. So this tank will, is going to look a lot like this. It's just going to be a little bit wider and maybe, maybe not quite as exposed.
Good, Jim?
How high will it be? I think I saw on the plan it was 28 feet, 29 feet?
I can show you that, again, it is, but a lot of it is buried, so the, the exposed frontage is going to.
That's what I was talking about, well, I think it says from the floor to the, to the top of the tank is about 29 feet, I just wanted to clarify that.
From, yeah, it is about that.
Okay.
Because you've got the dome, we have a 24, or 20 foot working water height.
Yeah.
And so there is some dome to it that adds, I think, about six or seven feet, and then there's a big slab on the bottom. So, yeah, we'll be, we'll be, overall, that structure is about that. I don't know.
Okay, how big is this one in the picture?
Again, I don't have the precise dimensions.
Is it lower?
This, this one, I believe, is a little bit higher than ours.
Higher?
It's higher, but ours will be bigger than this.
Wider?
In volume. It's, it's, it's going to be similar in diameter.
Okay.
So, again, it's, it's, just to give you a feel for what it's like, I don't have the precise dimensions on this, so take that for, hopefully, to understand what we're looking at. Now, the building, here's our elevation views developed by our architect. If you have looked at the full set of plans, you will note that this building is about, currently as, as shown, about 17 and a half feet roughly square, so it's a little bit less, I think it's about 16 and change and 17 and change on the dimensions. We, one of the review comments that we've got with our 90% review is to try to make this building smaller, and we've been working on that. We actually expect this building to be reduced in size by about four feet in each dimension. We're likely to be about 13 and a half feet square, so we're, we're showing you this because this was our 90%, as I said, we're likely to be slightly, slightly smaller.
Okay, so 13 feet square, how high, again?
Again, I don't know the precise number, I can get you that. It's, it's a standard, like, you know, seven and a half foot ceiling inside, you know, the dimension to the pinnacle is, you know, something I have to look up for you.
So maybe 10 or 12 feet at the most?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't look like it's as high as it is wide, so.
No, no, it's, it's not, and even at this scale, again, being a bit bigger on this drawing, we're going to move the door to the center, but you can see in terms of height how, how it relates to a standard door.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we don't see the height changing with.
And who made the comment to make the building law, smaller? Was that?
Well, it, it actually originated with our own in-house review based on a hydraulic concern, and it kind of mushroomed, as some of these conversations do, to develop a situation where this, this will actually be a two-level building inside. We're going to be dropping the floor from the earlier concepts that you see to allow for a better hydraulic condition, and that will actually provide some benefits to allow us a smaller footprint for the building as well. So it's a long, long story of how it came out, but what was driving it was a hydraulic concern, and the benefit was that it'd be less intrusive and a smaller, smaller structure. The structure is intended to be a masonry structure. This would have a architectural block outside to it, textured, a brick and block style design, and an asphalt shingled roof, and that's.
Will it make noise when those turn on and off, when it controls?
No.
Okay.
No, this, this, this has absolutely no moving parts, really. It's electronic signal sensing pressure, it sends a radio signal down to, to East Road. There, there's, there's nothing that, that will make noise here. We do also, I should probably mention, plan on some security fencing around the site. I should get back to the site plan here, and, whoops, wrong one. And we will, we will fence this area with a chain link fence, and we will have a security gate here, just a bar gate, to try to keep people from driving into the site, and then around the tank, we will have a, a chain link fence with standard six foot tall with a three barbed wire security fencing. And we'll have a security alarms here as well, intrusion alarms and lighting that will, the operator turn on, it's not permanently lit, we, we would envision the only time lights are turned on is when, when an operator might have some, an unique emergency there.
I'm going to ask you another height question.
Sure.
On the, on the, the fence, how high is the fence? How high would the fence be?
I just, I, I thought, I'm sorry, six foot high.
Six feet?
Six foot standard fence, and then a three, well, that, that's the fence, and then it has a three bar strand, three strand barbed wire.
Okay, so it won't block the view of the tank, you will still see a 29 foot tall tank behind it?
You won't see 29 feet because most of the tank is underground.
No, but when I looked at it, the floor of the tank was, to the top, was 29 feet, so the floor is right at the ground level, right?
No, no, it's being buried 20 feet below.
Okay, if you could tell me how, how deep is it, how high is it above the ground?
Let me, let me show you the better detail here, if I can, seeing, this is not a.
Why are you doing that? The 12 foot high building will, will be seen over the fence, the little building.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So.
Have you standard chain link fence, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our elevation is, try to read this. Should have all these numbers memorized, I see.
I think at the bottom of that one, I think it's at the bottom of that one that had the, keep going down. All right, here we go, right by it. There you go, right there.
Yeah.
Either that one, or there was another one that had the elevation on it. Maybe not that one?
They, they all do in some respect. Again, it depends on the, the point in the tank that you're looking at, the finish grade or zoomness. There we go.
I'm just asking if, you know, if you could see it over top of the fence, that, you know.
Oh, yeah, you will, absolutely.
It will be, okay.
Absolutely.
That, right there, you can pretty much see what's going to be buried.
Right, so it's five foot 11, I guess six foot, that's not bad, yes, of a dome rate, dome height that you see, we're looking at a variety of grade levels, but elevation 259, I'm sorry, 271 here, and elevation of the water, this dome elevation says 285, 286 plus six, so 292-ish, so you'll see about 21 feet at a max.
All right, so what's buried is only the, from the floor to the 271, so seven feet is buried.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most of it is above ground.
Right, I think, I think, again, in the front, it's a little bit, I thought it was more in the front, I apologize if I had the dimensions wrong, but let me try to get to the right place here. Oops, I want to get to the site plan, which is in our C drawings.
Well, that answered my question, I just wanted to know how far above the fence it was going to be. It's not unsightly, but it is above the fence.
Right, and, and, you know, one thing we have not incorporated in the design, but we've had some discussions about, and I was kind of waiting to hear what you folks might think about landscaping.
Landscaping, right?
You know, we, we have not included significant landscaping. I know landscaping can be a maintenance concern, and it cuts both ways, but we are not showing a significant amount of landscaping or any landscaping other than lomy and seating of the property.
Would it be a cloth protected area that is not allowed growth around the perimeter, around the outside edge of the tanks?
No, I mean, we'll have a drip edge around the building there for, on the, on the side.
You could potentially have stuff growing right up against.
Right, right, and you may prefer, instead of being close to the building with, with landscaping, actually near the fence.
Is what?
Near the fence. I mean, the view is from the, from the street, and.
Well, I'm just thinking, you don't want growth, tree growth or anything next to the tank necessarily.
No, you really don't, so I would pull it, I'd pull it in front of the fence. Your question about the fence detail, what we're showing now is a six foot fence, this picture shows what we have, kind of a standard chain link.
Did you say there was a security camera there or just security alarms?
Both.
There is, so somebody sitting in the, let's say, the highway garage would have a, be able to view it, or?
We, we are trying to do that, yes.
Okay, I would think that would be a good, good idea.
And the only reason I'm a little hesitant is we're actually just talking with the state now about relaying information to the highway garage, and what you see in these designs, if you really dig into them, you won't see that, that, that camera, and you won't see a link to the garage yet. This is strictly between the, the, the East Road pump station and this right now, but, but that is the plan to. and this right now. But, but that is the plan, to have that re-echoed, if you will, at the garage, which is somewhat new to the, the planning.
Excuse me. Gene, was there also discussion on potentially having that hooked into the police station as well?
There has not been.
No, all right.
And I, I think that we can, we can discuss how that might be relayed and where it's relayed. I literally just talked with the state last week.
Okay.
About the concept of expanding where this, this telemetry goes. And the, the initial reaction was, yeah, I'll get back to you, it sounds like a good idea. But I only talked to them about relaying it to the garage.
Okay.
So, getting back to my point about landscaping, you know, I certainly welcome your input, but rather than trying to put something around this tank, it might be better to, to, to put a hedgerow by the, the fence.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah. I don't, you know, those hedges do grow twenty feet or so, so it would.
Yeah.
It would block the view.
And even if they're only six.
I said it's not unsightly, but still.
Yeah. And it's set back quite a ways from the road, if you went up there.
Down, is it down the hill from?
It, it is not, actually. It's, it's really interesting topography. Grade, drainage, depending on where you stand, actually goes here to the left of the drawing. But there is a low spot down in here, and relative to the, to the, to the road, I think we're actually still uphill.
Do, do we have some kind of picture of what the property looks like now? You know how we can, like a satellite picture?
Go on Earth, Google.
Yeah, Google Earth, yeah.
Can, can we?
I don't know.
Can I do that here?
Be able to see all the.
You can, no, but what I'm saying is.
Yeah, you can see what's there.
Because I believe it's all wooded right now.
It's, it's sparsely wooded, yeah. There's some apple trees back there. There's, depending on how far back you go, the, the, there's a fence line there now. And just immediately behind the fence, on, on town land, someone planted some apple trees some years ago. They're a little bit overgrown. And then beyond, beyond that, it gets to be just, just this woods. And.
So it, from the, the house that's on the road, is that clear from behind that house to the town's property line? This here? Is this the house, right here?
Yes, there's a house there.
Okay, so is this property clear?
Yes, for the most part.
So this, so the, so the people that live in this house, I don't know if it's the people that are here tonight.
That's where they're at.
Okay, so.
Way next door.
They're selling their house.
So that's what I'm kind of wondering, so.
It's been forty-five years. They're making a mess up on Sweet Hill Road, I don't know. You know.
So we're, we're going to be clearing all the, all the trees, right? All the trees are going to go that's on the town's property? Are we going to leave any of the trees that are on there?
It's all gone, yeah.
It's going to get cleared, cleared out.
You're going to clear it all, we do a small wall between.
Only, only what needs, only what needs to be done, but, but most of it is being occupied. We, we are requiring clearing back in here, or over here. But this, this area will be cleared and regraded. This is kind of an overflow retention pond, just to keep things, you know, contained a little bit if there is an overflow, or if the tank needs to be drained. Generally, things drain off the back like this. However, there is a low spot here as you come through.
Very wet there, too.
Right.
Very wet. I don't know how that's going to, you may actually need to take a look at that. It's going to be drained off on that hill. This grass is going to drain off, come down our property. And it already has a little pond. We've got a stream come through there all the time. Anybody looked at that?
We have looked at that, and, and we're, we're confident.
The shade looked at it. I know you've looked at it.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
They approved that? It's a wet man. I would think that's a wet man. I don't know how you can do it. You've got water coming right up out of the ground, right at the bottom of that hill.
Sir, you should come up and speak so people can hear you at home.
I can do that. I mean, I don't want to be a pain in the neck, but, again, I've been here forty-five years.
Can we just?
I pay $9,000 in taxes. I want to look at a fish tank in my backyard.
Can we just time out for a minute? And let's let this gentleman.
I know, I've talked to him a couple of times. A nice guy, understand the town, needs this, but, you know, we're going to be stuck with this in my backyard.
Yeah, but just let him finish his presentation.
I thought he said for me to come up here.
I just wanted to make sure when he spoke, we could hear him. You should wait till the other gentleman finishes.
I'll do whatever you want.
Yeah. We, you know what, I mean, the, the normal course of events is, let's hear everything, and then everybody.
Well, I know I'm not going to fight City Hall anyway, I'm wasting my time, but.
The town hall, the town. Please don't call it, come on. All right. But, you know, I mean, everybody will be able to say everything they want.
I know, we can say everything, but what's going to get done? So probably if he says.
It's a public hearing, and we're going to try to.
All right.
Make sure we solve problems and not create them. Do you want to take it from here?
Well, I'm, I'm not a real expert with Google Earth. We can zoom in on the site if you can.
So this is the, you're coming up the hill.
Right.
That's that new development that goes way down the hill. So I'm thinking it's up here, isn't it?
We're right, no, further up. Do you know these streets?
Yeah, let me go see the location.
Yeah, I think that one's either rustic.
Can we plug the address in?
I did that.
Okay.
You know what, I can get the, the.
Right? Yeah, you're going, going in the wrong direction.
That's the street I was in.
Hold on. Look at the Partridge. Yeah, way down back in.
Yeah.
Right? It feels like a feed.
Yeah, there is a lot of water up there.
Tim, is that your house that's there?
No.
No? Oh.
Which is the property, I don't know.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, yeah. Right there it is. Across from Partridge, yeah.
So it's right here. This is the property, right across the street.
Yeah.
Right there?
Right there.
So where those trees are will be the driveway.
Exactly. That, that area there, right across from Partridge, is a bit overgrown between those two homes. And that area is your, your, your drive coming in.
Yeah, that's Partridge.
This just takes a little while for it to catch up. If it does, I don't think, we may not even have street level at this.
Pull out just a little bit.
Yeah. Oh, it's at ground level. It, it's not set up for, here we go. So, in between these two houses, this Partridge Lane, so.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's going up here, and.
You're down by the safety guard.
No, no, that's it, Jim. That's it.
Now, you can see that, you can barely see it, but there's a fence there, just below the hand, right there, that, that Mr. Rainey has put along his property line, and it's right behind that. And as you can see, a couple of apple trees there, and the, it's, it's sparsely overgrown as you get close to the house, but the back part is.
So, sir, I just want to ask you a question. So this right here is your house? Is this your house? Is that thirty-nine?
No.
No.
That's the house with the circular driveway.
No, it's to the right. It's the one to the right, I believe.
Oh, here?
Right there.
Okay.
I think that, is that correct?
No, it's not either.
That's it, right there.
Right there.
No?
This one, right there.
Right there.
All right.
I think so.
So looking at.
He doesn't eat, he's stolen.
Yeah.
Right, Jim?
What?
I believe that one there with the hand is the terrain.
That's right, it is.
Right?
So looking at this plan, okay, and you can do some measurements too, but the tank is going to be located right here where the hand is?
Just about.
Yeah. So you have that, you do have that wooden line there. And the top of this tank is going to be twenty-one feet, you said?
It, it depends on the grade, but yeah, about that, twenty feet.
Yeah. So the, these trees, I mean, you, you can probably estimate how high they are. They thirty, thirty-five feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it pretty tall, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just, I, I'll tell you, I'm guessing, in the summertime, you won't see this. In the wintertime, you're probably going to get a glimpse at it.
Well, he said that they were going to clear.
Yeah, I want a glimpse, you know, like, stand the tongue, you just grow things, you done. I just don't want to be stuck with a mess.
Right.
I worry about the water, basically. I mean, you're, and the other thing is, you know, I just want to talk to him, Mr., Mr. Moore, Chairman Moore. You know, as, as water tanks go, this is the, the least obtrusive type of tank. I, I work in another town in that. We put a tower, a four-hundred-thousand-gallon water tank that stands, you know, a hundred fifty feet. And, you know, it's a visual. You can see it from a long way away. It was right next to an neighborhood. There were a lot of, you know, opposition. Really didn't want to see that. But they were most, they were most concerned with what happens if the thing springs a leak or whatever, you know, how, how is all that water going to dissipate safely? You know, and Mr. Forrest will explain to you that. Because the tank has to get cleaned out, maintained periodically, not often, but when it does, they have a, a retention area that will have the capacity to hold that water, and, you know, it'll soak into the ground eventually.
Am I describing that properly, or?
Yes.
John, you should speak into the mic. People at home can't hear you.
Yeah.
Oh, this is a TV.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we, we really want to, we want to mind our pings and twos.
Can I ask a question, please?
Come up to the mic.
I'm going to go back.
He said he was going to clear.
Ma'am, ma'am, excuse, ma'am, could you come up to the microphone so that people can hear you? Yeah, because nobody can hear you saying anything.
I didn't know. They said that they were going to clear the property.
Come up to the mic.
Ma'am, in the microphone, in the microphone. Speak in the microphone, because, because nobody can hear what you're saying. This one right there.
And again, please, please say your name and your address.
They said that they were going to clear the property, all right? But do they have to clear beyond where they're going to fence it? Or are they just going to clear where they're going to fence it? In other words, that's all town property up there. Are they going to clear the whole thing, or just where?
What I was trying to say is, we will clear most of it. And I'll show you just what I mean by that.
Could you move the mic closer to your, the mic, so people at home can hear?
If I can get back to the drawings.
You want?
So this site plan, and I'll try to blow it up here a little bit for you, shows existing contours, as well as proposed final contours. Now, there's a bit of a knoll here. You can see the existing contours at about elevation seven. I'm sorry, that's a, not elevation. I think that's two-sixty-six-nine was the spot. Here it is, two-seventy-two is, is, is that high spot. Currently, and I'm going to actually try to get over here. I'm not good.
It looks like you're going to maintain a two-hundred-and-seventy elevation, pretty much throughout the site.
But, but what I want to point out is that the existing contours have, they kind of reach up into this area and create a drainage situation, where drainage now comes down the way this cursor is going, and runs right across this, this, this property. And as was correctly pointed out, it's wet right down through here. There's even standing water right over here.
Pond, right there.
Yeah, that's the standing water, there's a pond. And what you see happening here, two-sixty-four, two-sixty-five, two-sixty-six. So, so elevation climbs here, but then when you get over here, it starts dropping off. Two-sixty-four, two-sixty-two, two-sixty, two-sixty-four, two-sixty-two. We are planning to have the site graded in a way that creates a, an infiltration basin here, that ultimately can drain, once this is topped, back down into the back of the, the way, the woods sheet flow, if it ever needs to. But for the most part, this is just going to be a, a, a dry area. The low elevation's two-sixty-two-ish, goes two-sixty-four, two-sixty-five, two-sixty-six, in all directions. So everything here is going to collect. And I should point out, the, the issue with water on this site is about surface water. It might feel like groundwater at times because it's muddy, because it's, it's, it's running in that top layer of soil. But this entire knoll is a, a compacted glacial till. We were just up there today, again, confirming with Borings, what we have for soil. There's no water flowing in that soil. It's all floating on the top. We're talking about a surface water issue. And so, we're not expecting any sort of runoff increase. Water that currently flows down through this area will not be impeded by the, the driveway, because we are not going to crown that driveway. We're going to design it as a slope driveway to, to be able to basically maintain the sheet flow of surface water in the same direction it always has, right across this way. We're not touching this property, and we're not going to impact it. This tank will, the, the site will drain into this pond. In fact, will probably create some level of, of improvement to drainage, because we will have a foundation drain around the tank. This perimeter drain is upside down on this drawing, but this perimeter drain will take any of the, the water that might accumulate near that tank into this infiltration basin. So we, we don't expect to, to create any impacts in terms of water flowing on, on anybody's property here.
Are you saying that's a permeable asphalt?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that the slope of that, that drive is such that it will not impede the water flow across it.
Okay. I think the question, you talked about drainage, that's fine. We're, I think I'm satisfied with that. But the question the lady asked was, where are you going to clear? I'm looking at your plan.
Yeah.
And I can see, I think the chain link fence doesn't go the entire property, if I'm not mistaken. But I'm not sure where, could you just show us where the chain link fence goes?
Okay.
And also, where are you going to clear?
All right, this is the limit of clearing here. This is the existing tree line as we've identified it. And this is the limit of clearing around here.
All right, so that corner, those two corners, you're not going to clear, and those big trees will be there.
Correct. But most of the site, I mean, I, I, when I said before, most of the site is cleared. You can see that new limit of clearing runs, runs through most of the site. But we have no intention of clearing any more than we have to.
Right.
And, and the, the, the clearing i- is not going to extend beyond this. We're showing it on our drawing. It is indicated as a limit. And we have no intention of, of taking any more than we have to. Now, as far as the fence, I, I can tell you, this current design shows it here, like this, across the pond. We are talking about, although it has not been changed, I'd love to hear your input, but we are talking about, it, it is probably more prudent to fence this entire area where this, this may accumulate water, and you don't want kids in there trying to ice skate or fish and, you know, or whatever, and think it's, it's a, it's a playground to be in the water. It may be there at times. So we are likely to fence this, this infiltration area. That, that's, again, one of these final review comments that came up.
That's, that's where I was going, too. It, it looked like that was a good idea. I think that's a good idea, to fence around the, the pond, if you, whatever you call it.
Yeah. I mean, mo- most of the time, that will be dry. Certainly, you know, vernal pools, things like that accumulate. This will be something where, again, because the groundwater, the, the ground there is, is not very permeable. It, it is permeable, but very, very slow. This, this is something that may at times have some standing water in it.
But it occurs currently, does it not?
Pardon me?
It currently is in that condition.
Well, currently, no, it's not. There's, there's, a- as, as the, the gentleman here pointed out, there is some standing water down here that, that is, is basically creating a condition where, you know, water's got no place to go. And unless it's warm summer day, that thing probably, you know, rarely dries up.
But you're not going to exacerbate that. You're not going to affect that.
We're not going to be anywhere near that.
It's going to be what it is. It's not going to change.
Right.
You said you're gonna use that as like a, you're gonna drain the tank off occasionally, do what you gotta do, and it's gonna sit in that area that you're gonna fence off. How long is that water gonna sit there?
Draining of the tank is an extremely rare situation. If it happens once in 10 years, I'd be surprised.
So you're fencing it in for that?
No, I'm fencing it in because there will be times whether, weather-wise.
Gene, hey, um, Gene, are you done with your presentation or do you want to continue?
There's nothing more I really need to say except I welcome any other questions.
How about, yeah, the board want to ask questions now or you want to open it up to the public?
I think we should ask questions and then you guys can get up and, you know, whatever. I have one other question. On the corner of the property, there's a, it says, trying to read it, future alternate tank location, which intrigues me. What does that mean?
We just don't want to use up the whole site for one tank. There's no real plans. Nobody has said we're gonna build another tank.
You're just thinking ahead.
We just don't want to utilize the entire site and say, gosh, I wish we put this tank elsewhere.
Does that, did that kind of persuade you to move the tank where it is so you would have room for an alternate tank? I mean, you have the tank over here.
To some extent. When this was originally conceptualized, this is actually before I was on this job, we did borings here, 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 and here in anticipation of the tank more in this location.
Yeah.
And in doing that, as we got into the design, beyond the conceptual design, we felt, well, gee, if we put the tank there, that really just kind of takes and consumes the whole site.
Yeah.
And that's short sighted. We didn't want to do that.
Right.
So we pushed it to the bottom of the page here so that there would be room in any event that things change and, you know, someday you may want to put another tank in there.
Yeah, it looks like you situated it so you could have another tank there and then a piping going into the same.
Exactly, exactly. And the borings we did today were basically mimicking what we did before, targeting one in the center. In this case, we did three other perimeter borings, but they were out there today doing one here, one there, one here, and one here. So we've got better characterization of the soils. I was out there with a geotechnical engineer this afternoon. This entire area is pretty consistent. It's a compacted glacial till, very good stable foundation, and we don't see any ledge up there. The center boring went down 55 feet today, so.
One final question for me. 400,000 gallons, what's, how do you come up with 400,000 gallons? It has something to do with, you know, once you build out, you're gonna need so many gallons up there, but how do you decide on 400,000?
The way that is done from, without getting too mathematical right now, is there's three major components that go into it, redesigning. Fire flow is one. We talked about a little bit regarding what you might need for the area. That volume needs to be incorporated. Another part of it is the daily maximum demand, how much you're going to use every day. And the third is a factor that relates to the ebb and flow of the diurnal situation where you've got peaks in the daytime and, you know, your operating volumes might change. So there's a factor that's generally used to carry an estimate, a volume estimate for that functional use.
Okay, at the risk of asking too many questions, I have one more.
Okay.
Are you gonna be using, will the tank be used for any fire suppression? It's only for potable water? Could it be used for fires?
It is, it is used for fire suppression. Your fire suppression system that is existing...
We'll use the same tank.
Will use the same piping system, the same network in your community.
Yeah.
That is now a fire suppression system. That water source comes from a pond that you have. It used to be a tank. And some fire pumps that are located down, I think Methuen Construction is on that property adjacent, they're right near the town garage. That distribution system will be converted to a potable water system.
Right.
It will be serviced by this tank and by the pump station on East Road. So in the event of a fire flow condition, you've got the capacity of this water, the volume of this water, and the flow capacity of the 12-inch line running into town, and you've got the flow capacity of the pump station and the volume of the Atkinson tank combined to meet your fire flow goals for the community.
So it does have some fire improvement, improvements to the fire suppression?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, that's good.
Yes.
Do you have any plans to put fire hydrants out as part of this?
The water mains that we are building or intend to build all have standard fire hydrants located at various distances or intersections where...
So the connection can be made at a later date by...
I'm sorry, connections.
The installation, I should say, of the hydrant.
That's all gonna be part of the construction of those water mains.
Okay.
So we're gonna have four contracts right now that we envision. Contract number one are water mains for the project. Contract number two is the pump station. Contract number three is this tank. Contract number four are the currently 76, maybe it grow to 100, but the 76 service connections that we know now that will be made to bring these MTB contaminated properties, connect them to the potable water system. So that's how we see it structured in terms of construction sequencing. We'll be looking at individual contracts to try to maximize the specialized nature of each of the project components. Somebody who's doing main line work is not specialized in tank construction. Someone who's doing pump station work isn't necessarily specialized in tank and pipeling. So we've got this broken out to maximize the uniqueness of each component.
So where do the fire hydrants fall into that?
So the fire hydrants are part of the main line work. So when we're putting a line in, say, for example, the line up Sweet Hill Road, there will be fire hydrants every 300 or 400 feet at intersections of roads, things like that. It's not always driven by a length, but at the very least, we are going to be installing fire hydrants along every place where we're putting in new water main.
Okay. So that's part of that?
That's part of the water main.
Inlay.
Yes.
And that should lower some people's insurance, I would think, if you have a hydrant there now.
I'm not an insurance expert, so I can't...
No, I'm just speculating.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay, any more questions from anyone?
I'm just concerned about the...
About the what?
You know what? Yeah, you gotta come to the mic and you have to say your name and your street address, please, for the record, because we take, all of this is minutes taken.
Our property is lower.
Excuse me, ma'am. Your name and address.
Oh.
And then you can say, you can say anything you want after that, but you have to first say your name and your address, okay?
In the mic, please.
Thank you.
Leanne Hartford, 39 Sweet Hill.
You can sit down there.
Pardon?
You can sit down there.
Oh, that's okay. Our property is lower than where this tank is gonna be. So when he's talking runoff or standing water, it's gonna come right onto my property. Follow me?
I hear what you're saying, but I think we'll have Gene answer the question. I think when they grade the property, they're grading it so that any of the runoff from the property goes into that infiltration basin and does not flow offsite.
Okay, so...
But I'll have Gene answer that.
They're gonna grade it so that it won't run down in?
Yes, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I was trying to explain how we're grading the site. We are taking care to do a grading plan here that does not direct any water offsite. And in the event that there was something catastrophic, for example, if the instrumentation doesn't work, there is a tank overflow. That all is directed into that tank. And looking at that picture where you see the grading, yes, parts of that site have the potential to drain to the left, which would come to your land, but we're actually grading it so things, if anything, will drain to the right and away from your site down the other bank.
To the back?
Yes. So we are sensitive to your concern. I believe we have it right. We'll certainly take another look at it. I appreciate you bringing up your concern. You know, we're not here to just, you know, say, you know, you can't fight City Hall. We want to hear your concerns and I will take another look at this and we will do our best to make sure that nothing is draining to your land.
That pond that you're talking about wasn't already there. Two or three property owners ago dug it, so it really wasn't there. And, you know what I mean?
I do, I do.
It does dry up.
Yeah.
In summertime.
I certainly, I think I understand the hydraulic situation that's causing that existing pond, if you will. And to some extent, we're facing the same struggles in that we have a very low permeable soil underneath the topsoil. And we're sensitive to the potential for very slow infiltration. That location there where that existing pond is, as you call it, is one that is really exacerbated the way things are funneled down there. I don't think, and we've looked at this, I don't think we're going to have those kind of problems there. Again, because for the most part, our site drops off significantly right off the backside rather than the front side.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And Gene, I really want to try to be as clear as possible on this issue.
Okay.
Okay, so people can feel as comfortable as possible with the answers. So this is where the water tank is or is it, say, right in this area here?
A little to the left, I think, is more appropriate.
Over here?
Right about there. I think that's probably as close as I could.
That's the water tank.
Yeah.
Now, you're talking about the stormwater drainage, where it's going to sheet flow to, and where from there are you talking? This is your, this is your house here.
Let me, let me point out that when I talk about water coming off this site.
Yeah.
There are multiple potential sources. Potential source number one, stormwater, it rains.
Yeah.
Number two, as I mentioned, there's always a possibility that system failures happen, that the pump will keep pumping. You've got alarms, you've got all sorts of things to stop that from happening, but there is an overflow and there's potential for that water have to go somewhere. Source number three is maintenance on the tank. In the event, and you know, and many of you don't, but tanks are rarely ever drained. They are drained more frequently for some types of tanks, steel tanks, for example, but very rarely are they drained. If we're draining it, that's a source of water. And number four, things like our foundation drains, you know, could contribute water. So what we have for the site grading creates a situation where, to the extent possible, we are letting water sheet flow off in that direction, downhill, downhill, downhill. We are trying to avoid anything that brings it this way, but we want everything to go that way and we have a pond, if you will, or a basin. I think pond is a misnomer because we do not expect it to be filled by the most, for the most part, but certainly recognize times, you know, particularly after, you know, a cold winter, you've got, you know, spring kind of situations that would create like a vernal pool there. You could have water more likely in the springtime than in August, for example. But for the most part, this pond that we are constructing, this basin that we're constructing, will serve as two things. One is this lower area of that will create a higher point to keep flow from going this way. And if that pond were to overtop or basin would overtop, it would go that way instead. So we are sensitive to the homes there. I can't tell you that, you know, it's impossible to conceive of a mistake here.
Sure, I mean, we're right there, you know?
I do, and I recognize it and I'd like to think we've done it and solved. We're doing our best to do that.
Mr. Chairman, so Gene, I want to, again, be a little bit more clearer here. So everything having to do with this site is being engineered and designed, so it's sheet, everything's, it's gonna be flowing to the back of the property, into the wooded area.
Right.
You're designing it in a manner so none of it is going to flow towards the properties, the developed properties.
The only semantics there, and I just want to be as precise as possible, I would say no more than is happening today. There already is, as you saw in the earlier, the existing grading has a crown on that site and some of it goes off the back, some of it comes to the front. We're not gonna bring any more to the front than is coming there now, but we're not gonna stop everything that is coming there now.
And that's standard design, pre-development versus post-development. Post-development not to create anything more than what's already happening right now before the development. So that's the goal and that's what it's being designed for. I'd just like to point out a couple of things with maintenance of facilities like this. Say in the old days, they would design these water tanks and there would be openings. And critters love openings and that's where you get contamination. That's when you get causes for having to empty the tanks and clean them. This one is going to be, it's a modern tank, it's fully contained, it's, the interior of the structure is shielded from any entrances by any critters.
Right.
Because, you know, if a bird flies in and, you know, ends up dying, you know, and this water is always tested as to its purity. If contaminants are found, then they have to find where the contaminants are coming from. But, you know, you really, these modern tanks are controlled environments within. Pure water is going in or what treated water is going in, potable water, and you have to keep it to a water quality that is not causing anybody any harm. So it's always being tested. If they do find sources of contamination and say it's inside the tank, that's when they're cause for maintenance. But it's nothing like it used to be in the old days. And, you know, we did have to put a lot of maintenance. And these facilities, they have a 40 to 50-year timeframe, you know, depending on where you are in your lifespan. You know, they do wear out and you, you know, and, you know, if the, the other thing is as the town grows in the future, as water demand increases, these particular high elevation locations, that's what they're mostly used for in every community. That's your cheapest source of water distribution. You don't have to put pumps in. It's all gravity flow and that creates the pressure in the water system, you know. And when you're talking about ebb and flows, you fill it up in the nighttime and it's going to be drained in the daytime, you know, but you want to make sure that the waters, always has the water pressure and quantity that's necessary to meet the daily flow demand.
If I could just also, I know I pointed out something before, but I think this picture shows it very well. This is the high point and you see the 272 contour. Here you can see how the 270 contour comes down. The 268 contour wraps around. The 266 contour wraps around. This whole ridge, if you will, drains in this direction, in this direction, in this direction. And we're sensitive to that flow. We're gonna keep everything that's flowing to the right here, continue to go to the right. Everything that flows down this way is gonna be collected down here. Everything that currently flows down here is, you know, still gonna go that way. I'm not, I'm not changing that, but we're not adding anything new.
To that point, when you put the driveway and it's paved, correct?
Correct.
And it's slanted so the water still flows?
Right.
Where you put the driveway and it's now what, trees?
It's what?
Is it trees?
Yeah, it's pretty overgrown. I don't know if I'd call them trees, but yeah, they're trees.
Where you put the driveway in, it's now what, trees?
It's what?
Is it trees?
Yeah, it's pretty overgrown. I don't know if I'd call them trees, but yeah, they're trees.
Big bushes.
So putting a driveway in will add, putting a driveway on will add to the flow, but not measurable?
Oh, gosh, it's for, it's a 16-foot or 12-foot, actually, I think we meant a 16-foot driveway. It's not, it's not significant.
It's not going to be measurable. I'm just saying it's not going to slow down the water.
No.
It's going to speed it up, but it's not going to be measurable.
Not, not in any significant way, no.
I was just out on a site similar to this with a freshly paved surface road to the tank and we were in, it was a pouring rainstorm, you know, and the sheet flow, it just dissipates into the vegetation, the bordering vegetation.
I mean, we, we.
Are there any culverts involved underneath?
I was just going to say, we talked a lot about how to deal with this concern. We heard it from Mr. Renee and, you know, I think we would have seen it anyway, but we do not want to channelize it. We don't want to have things brought to a culvert where there's none now, because once you channelize it, it's hard to spread it out again. So we're trying to be as minimally impacting as possible.
So you don't even have a culvert involved with the roadway intersection?
No.
That's good. It's a good thing.
I hope it is.
All right. Anyone, any more questions? Okay. So I think we had.
Does anybody wish to speak?
No.
No. We had two recommendations, that the infiltration area be fenced, as you recommend you probably would do, but I think we just want to confirm that, I think the planning board would like to make that same recommendation. And the second is that some type of hedge be planted along the fence bordering their properties, lots 6219.
That would be tall, you know, tall enough, that would grow, the very kind of vegetation.
Yeah. Any particular plant species? I mean, we can make our own judgment on that.
Abercites, aren't those 30, 40-foot?
Some kind of arborvitae would, they grow 20.
And they quick growing too.
Some don't grow that high, but the kind that grow 20 feet.
Yeah.
Of course, they take time.
We wouldn't start off with a 20 footer.
Well, you would probably start off with at least six to eight or 10, something like that.
I'll see what we can do.
If you can get those. I know you can get six footers.
Well, a big part of it is, again, this project is entirely being funded by the state. So we will, we will present to them an idea. I don't think they'll have any problem with that, but I can't promise.
Those are fairly cheap.
And they grow fairly quickly. I believe they grow two to three feet a year, so.
Some of them do, yeah. You have to get the right variety.
Yeah.
I mean, the only, the only thing is that your soils are thin.
They are.
Up there. And, you know, to plant a smaller one, they grow into their environment and, you know, they become healthier because they get used to that. If you plant the big one, it's harder for them to root and everything else, so it might take more time to shield, but arborvitae, once they're in place.
They never come out.
They never stop growing either. They do create an incredible screen.
You just don't want it to go 10 years before blocks. It doesn't fulfill what we're trying, so you need them high enough so they will, or they will grow fast enough.
But it also appears that the tank is set back far enough.
Yeah.
So that, I'm going to guess maybe eight months out of the year, you probably won't see that anyway with the surrounding vegetation. It's only in the winter months you'd be concerned.
And it's not one of those things that draws the eye to it. It's off the road, it's way back there, you know, you're only going to see it if you look for it, really.
Jean, you know what, I'd like to suggest, you know, where it's easy today to generate what the tank is going to look like on that particular site, you know, when you have other hearings on this, so that anybody that really wants to see it, you can put it on the town website.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. And, you know, let's see what it's going to look like, because that's an easy generation.
Maybe the view from the road or the view from that, a butter.
Yeah.
You know, with the fence and the tank and the vegetation.
I mean, the towers are one thing. You can see those from miles away and the high elevation of this particular site, you know, people would see it, but this one will probably end up blending into the scenery pretty well. What color is the exterior going to be?
I was just going to ask that.
We haven't chosen a color, or that's something for discussion?
About camo.
Camouflage? Camouflage for spring, winter, or fall.
The gas tank on 93 that everybody knows, that somehow, somebody had the idea of having that painted.
Art, or care.
Yeah, it's become internationally famous landmark.
Yeah.
No.
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 We're not going there. And you hope it's not being painted by vandals either.
Yeah.
Although that becomes art and then you're in trouble. You know, you've got to get rid of it quick.
I don't think we have to worry about that. So were there any other points that we made, so those two? So if you look at the staff report on the last page, there's a draft motion. If somebody is willing to make that.
Should we amend the motion to add those things?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I didn't write them down, so. There were two of them.
The fence infiltration area.
Infiltration tank?
No, not.
No, the fence.
How about that? I get some language. The proposed fence, as shown on the plan, shall be installed along the perimeter of the entire site.
Well, I don't think we want to get into those trees. I think we would just loop it around. We can put something, to at least encompass the basin.
Yeah.
You know, I think therein is what you want. I would be reluctant to do anything that would, would cause more, more clearing.
Can I just mention something? Because it really, it's been a longstanding perturbance of mine. They fence in these retention basins everywhere, right? And I know, you know, people don't want, you know, anybody drowning or falling in them or whatever, but habitat, you know, can't get into them.
Love it, yeah.
You know, and they get trapped in there and it's ridiculous. I mean, ponds are everywhere. We don't have fences around ponds everywhere. We don't have fences along stream beds or anything else. So, you know, the wildlife needs to drink water and, you know, I just don't see the fence as being, you know, a necessary thing for anybody. It's not going to.
Again, I look to you to advise us how you feel about it. And, you know, if the answer is you'd rather not have a fence, we will take that to the state and have, again, all these things.
I'm just thinking of turtles, you know, dogs, everybody gets, you know, those things that really need water in that environment, you know, they have a hard time getting in and out of these things and it's ridiculous.
Well, we hope there's not water there most of the time.
Yeah, it's going to absorb into the ground.
So around the infiltration area, then, the fence could start four inches above the ground. That gives wildlife a chance to pass through. It still provides a safety issue for humans and larger animals.
But, yeah, people could crawl under. I guess, again, that's a good, good comment. We'll, we'll talk to the state about it and see how they feel.
Do you want a motion? Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to forward the following comments to the Board of Selectmen regarding the proposed municipal $400,000, $400,000, not dollar, gallon water tank to be located at 41 Sweet Hill Road, rear map 62, lot 18 in the MDR zoning district. Finding that the aforementioned use is provided for in accordance with the provisions of RSA 674-54 governmental land uses and that it is necessary relative to the proper storage and distribution of potable water, as shall be provided by the soon-to-be implemented municipal water distribution system, the planning board hereby recommends favorably to the Board of Selectmen the construction of said water storage tank with the following suggestions. Number one, proposed fence should be installed around the retention pond?
I'd use the term basin.
Infiltration basin, yeah.
Infiltration basin. And number two, landscaping or trees along the property line. Is that all right?
Again, I would put it just along the fencing.
Okay.
Exposed, fence, the side of fence, or the fence facing the road.
Okay.
Not all the fencing, not all the property line. No, we need it on the back or the sides.
All right. That's what I'll move. Did you get that, John?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
So we're just, the Board of Selectmen could also tweak this a little bit if they chose to.
They could.
We're just doing more or less of a recommendation. Is that right?
Correct.
So maybe that'll give you more time to talk about the fence and landscaping.
Yeah, I think as we move forward with this, and also, don't forget that this is basically a courtesy hearing because this is government.
Right.
Land, so we're crossing Ts and dotting Is and making sure that there is a record and a historical record of this.
Right. And we appreciate the fact that, you know, that.
Yeah, well, we abide by honest, open, transparent government and that's exactly what we're trying to do, so that's why we're here.
Okay, any more discussion? Call for vote then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing? Okay. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Just waiting.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Joe.
May I just ask a couple of questions about the executive summary? Are we finished with this?
Yep.
I just had, it's more of like a housekeeping question for you. On the executive summary, page three, it says a copy of the deed must accompany an application. Do we need to provide that, that verifies that the town owns the land?
Yeah, that would be part of the filing of it.
All right, and then the other.
The other thing is, do you want the site plan actually signed?
By whom?
No.
Tim? Okay.
We're not done yet.
Well, if we were the approving body.
It needs to be signed by the board.
Are you leaving?
All right. And then the other question.
Then they only need to sign it if they want it recorded at the registry of deeds.
And I, and it should be, correct?
I think it should be. Can I pass something along to you guys?
Sure, sure.
When you're recording any of the instruments that you want recorded as part of this, it should be reduced to eight.
I can't hear what's being said over here. John?
Okay.
I can't hear what you guys are talking about.
Reduce plan to eight and a half by 11?
Yeah.
And what else?
Are we still in the meeting or not?
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And, and the other question I had is on page five, it indicates no plans will be forwarded for review unless there is an escor account. We don't need that, do we, as a town entity? So we just need a deed, correct?
Question about when it goes to the Board of Selectmen.
So what?
Well, you know, it should be done completely thoroughly the way we would expect all other entities to do this, in my opinion. I think we should do it the right way.
Aye.
All right.
So you can't do it otherwise.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you guys take it outside? So our, next item on the agenda is Route 125 corridor study. I think what we're looking for tonight is if anybody has any kind of suggestions about what, what the scope of it might be or what could or couldn't be in there, just to give Steve some direction as to his proposal he would come back with.
Okay. Let Laurie go first.
So do we have any kind of price from Steve? What, how much this might cost or?
No, and this, he was kind of looking for some input, initial input from us about what the scope of it might be, so he could come back with a cost.
And I think if we could preface it by saying not to exceed X amount of dollars, because that's what the board does with a lot of the consultants that we're hiring. It's like, we want you to do this stuff, but not to exceed X amount of money, so what can you do for that? And that might help, at least we'll have a good idea of how to budget it.
And could I just say, once we talk about it tonight, if we're able to really get into it, we establish some parameters.
Right.
And he has done preliminary work concerning the conversation that took place at our last meeting. We can bag that to Steve. I'm suggesting let him put together a proposal and a cost estimate, then we can figure out. I mean, the guy can't, we're not going to get a product that we really need if he can't produce it for the amount of money that is going to be needed for him to survive. So why don't we talk about, I'm thinking with that Route 125 corridor, that we want to, we want him to stay within the present zoning district.
Yeah.
Of that corridor. We're not talking about expanding it or going into any abutting properties, but for him to recognize what the perimeter properties consist of, you know, so that, so he's going to be focused in on the 125 corridor itself as it is zoned, right? But also take into recognition what the abutting properties are. They're residential, are they commercial? You know, we have to know what they are so that, you know, as we go along, we want to make sure we're envisioning not creating impacts on people, adverse impacts. So with the corridor study, it's all, it's all a matter of figuring out, you know, mixes of uses that, say, don't exist now within the zoning ordinance, but what we would like to be able to introduce into that corridor study, into that overlay district. Because the ultimate goal is to have the right overlay district, allowing for the right mixture of uses, multiple uses within it. And also, as part of that is to recognize what's around it, but then, you know, what are the utility restrictions? We're going to have potable water, but we're not going to have sewage.
Sewage, right.
But you know what, Steve? Put the scenario together as part of this study, if sewage is introduced, you know, then what are we talking about? You know, what are, what are the densities that would, what would the different density allowances be if sewage was there as opposed to not?
Significantly different.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we want to know that as planners, you know, because.
Especially for a commercial district.
The city to the south has a lot of capacity in their sewer system, but they're not, any of the communities around there don't, are not planning or tying into it in any significant manner. So, you know, that may be the only potential for that corridor to have a sewer capacity in the future. You know, that's one of the possibilities. The other possibility is, you know, a much smaller, kind of self-contained, within the borders of Plastow type of facility that.
That's a whole nother ball of wax.
Right. You know, potable water is just an incredible entity, positive entity.
In and of itself, yeah.
Yeah, without blowing out the, you know, the perimeters of growth that, you know, may not be suited for a lot of the townspeople. But the whole idea with this, as explained before and talked about, is everybody recognizes that area of town as the economic engine for, for property tax revenue while protecting the neighborhoods, the existing neighborhoods of Plastow, to the extent possible. And by doing that and planning for it right, it does help to lessen the tax burden on the residents. And sometime, and when you do it right, it's, it's that catalyst of revenue production that helps you to maintain. And when you do it right, it's that catalyst of revenue production that helps you to maintain a good school system, safe police and fire, you know, a DPW that's able to plow in service and maintain the roadways, you know, much better than just being on the backs of the property owners, the residential property owners. The town's very lucky in that regard already, that you do have a commercial base that's well-established and looking to transform itself into a better future, you know, a more productive future for, you know, multiple uses that'll create really a sense of being, a sense of place, a place to go, a place to do a lot more things, you know, pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular level. You know, and again, plan for it. I mean, Salem and what's going on over there right now with Tuscany Village, that's on a much, much larger scale. But to introduce that type of environment on a smaller scale with all the uses that are going on out there that could go on and bringing in a lot more tax revenue for the town, you know, for many people, that's not a bad thing. It's a good thing. So, that's what we're trying to achieve. So, if we allow Steve to, you know, we get back to him, that's what we would like to do. Steve, what do you think about it? You know, what's your feedback? And, you know, knowing what we've discussed this evening, can you give us a cost estimate to produce something like this? These studies are done everywhere across the country. So, Steve, being a professional planner, he knows what he's going to have to produce, and he's going to know how much it's going to cost.
So...
It's like a mechanic. Mechanic, if they're going to change your radiator, they're going to figure it out, you know?
Are we talking like a segment of 125, like north of Bridge? Are we all of 125? What?
That's what he would do. Can I just say, Tim, you know, 125 is not the same in any stretch. It's different all along. You know, the far northern end is, you know, not as densely developed yet, and northern end doesn't really lend itself to the density that could be realized, you know, say from Walmart down to the state line, you know? And that's really the area that we're talking about mostly, is that highly-developed area that is looking to transform itself into, you know, modern-day, multiple uses that are, you know, bringing in more tax revenue, creating more jobs, creating more potential living environment.
So, are you saying kind of that nexus or that junction point would be the crossroads between 125 and Main Street? Okay.
And that would, when he comes back with the cost estimate, that's when we can get into more particulars and refine this thing. You know, we don't want to go at it blindly, but we don't want to really set parameters right now. That'll come along as Steve develops this thing. We got to get him back in here. Once he has that cost estimate and starts showing us maps of what he envisions, what we want to accomplish, you know, be a lot of give and take. It's a planning environment. It's a planning exercise. And as we agreed, I think wholeheartedly at the last meeting, this should be the number one planning goal for this planning...
This year, yeah.
As that's the zone we really have to focus in on. We're not planning to do anything with the residentially-zoned properties and the well-established residential neighborhoods throughout town. We want to protect those. People have some great zoning, they have great open space potential to keep intact. You know, really keep to the absolute extent possible the rural skill and character of the community. But to also take advantage of and utilize to the extent possible the potential along the 125 corridor.
Well, we should probably ask them to come in for one of our workshops then.
Say the next one, he'll be ready, don't you think, Tim?
I don't think Tim's going to be here, though.
Oh.
Yeah, he won't be here in April. Yeah, I mean, we don't, there isn't a lot of, there isn't a lot of money, so I'm thinking for that amount of money, what would come out of it is more conceptual plans.
Right, yeah.
And then, along with a cost estimate, to say, here's, if we try to implement some of these concepts, here's what it might cost to actually develop plans. And then, you know, you've got to have the corresponding changes in zoning as well. So, there's some, you know, I mean, that wouldn't be a big cost, I'm sure, but...
This could be a two-year planning exercise.
I'm thinking it's more...
Yeah, but you know what? We're trying to get ahead of the curve because the water's not going to show up just next year. You know, there's going to be a lot of construction involved, you know, before that system is up and running, you know?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're converging on 2022.
It's a multi-year practice, but...
And it's a layered project, obviously.
Definitely is something, I think we're all in agreement, that we really best do. Really gives the planning board a chance to actually really plan for the community and its future. A lot of planning board members never get a chance to do that. It's just something that happens.
Yeah.
And while you end up reacting to it as happening to you, because how you react to it is applications are being submitted.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll see if we can get Steve here maybe May or June. Okay. Not sure what, under new businesses legislative update, I don't have anything, anything there.
Would that be to do with that bill that you had submitted?
Well, that one got killed.
Oh, it did? Oh, is that what that, was she sent out? I wasn't sure what that meant.
I think the number was 1439.
Many of, most of them do.
Most of them do.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to talk about the 1420 bill? Or with regards to electric aggregation and net metering?
Yeah, those, I'm not sure where they are in the status, but those, there was, one of the bills for net metering would allow municipalities to install solar arrays, renewable energy and projects up to the limit of how much electricity they need. So, without worrying about the one megawatt cap. That bill, at least initially, Governor Sununu had indicated he would sign, and he's vetoed every other net metering bill in the last couple of years. And then there's another bill, pretty much the same as the last couple of years, to increase that cap for commercial industrial net metering users to five megawatts. He's vetoed that every year. No reason to suspect he won't veto that again this year if it gets out of all the houses. So, I would, I guess, I'll look and see what the status of those bills are, where they are in the process. And then our meeting in two weeks, if there's some action that we want to take, we can decide to do that.
Do you know if we have any site plans coming before us for the next meeting?
It seems like there's something. Not any big project.
No.
I can't think of, hand of what they, what they are.
Yeah, there's one, and we were introduced to it a couple of meetings ago. It's still being planned for, it hasn't been submitted for action. It's the one at the intersection of Main Street and 125.
Oh, yes.
It's on the westerly side, the south westerly side.
Kitty corner from where Sanborn's was.
With a contemporary...
Across from State Line Pet?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Exactly. It's a big parcel there, and it's a rather big development. Not gargantuan.
Yeah.
It's not tearing down a couple of houses and putting up, you know, 2,000 square feet. It's a little more than that.
Mr. Chairman, has the remodeling contractor that's doing work at the beginning of Main Street, has he filed any site plans for us to take a look at? Because I know that was pending too.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Does he know he has to do that?
They do.
They do, yeah.
That's been confirmed...
All right.
From the last meeting.
Right.
Good eye.
Yeah, I saw the opening soon sign. It's gone now.
Yeah. But that was there for like months, too.
Some people come here and, you know, end up being confused. I thought, I couldn't remember exactly what happened, you know? We covered that. Went over that with Dee.
Yes, they did have a building permit to do interior renovations. They did not have a permit to do, to place those storage containers in the parking lot. So, all that was brought to the attention of the building inspector. But I don't know what the status of that is. But they certainly are aware that they need to come back with a site plan.
And I have another question. I've read a lot about, I don't know if it's called Plastow Health Center, but Exeter Med...
Yeah.
That they're going to be putting in an urgent care center. They never disclosed that to us when they came before us. I would imagine an urgent care center is going to be open longer hours than what we approved on the site plan. Would that require them to come back before us?
It should.
And I actually, I'll piggyback on your question. Did we not also discuss the possibility of a second building being built on there? Do you recall that? And was that maybe their intent is that second building being the urgent care facility?
I don't know.
Do you remember talking about that?
I thought they just told us it would be retail, like medical retail.
Yep, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
I know they never told us.
About urgent care.
Urgent care.
Right.
No, certainly not in any definite form. You know, I mean, in the discussion about what might go there, at some point, they, you know, they may have mentioned in passing urgent care, but certainly was not a definite part of the plans that they presented.
You know, in looking at that issue and what was approved and what's on the site plan, the number of medical exam, examination rooms in that building doesn't change. You know, the urgent care component is something that wasn't actually discussed, but the actual number of exam rooms doesn't change within that site plan. And then the hours of operation are what they are. You know, they can't expand those hours of operation without coming back here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was on the site plan, correct?
Right.
Yeah, all right.
But the urgent care, I believe, will be open longer...
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a good point.
And it will be open seven days a week.
Right.
Which, when they came before us, we were under the impression it would be like doctor office hours...
Exactly.
That they were open.
So, that, under those assumptions and based on the site, the site plan that was documented, they would have to come back if they were going to do an urgent care? Yeah, I agree.
Well, urgent care with those extended hours, yeah.
Right, right.
Anything else? Okay, then we will adjourn.
Or, before we adjourn, do you have any more updates on Mr. Davey's properties? Because he's already gone another month before the sheriff was supposed to serve him and get rid of these cars.
No, I don't.
Is there any way we can find out?
I mean, I'll ask Dee.
Do you, if she can reach out, yeah? Because this just keeps going on and on and on, and there needs to be some kind of resolution and a finality to this, especially if the sheriff has been involved and is trying to serve in papers.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for doing that.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll adjourn at 8:15.